Good evening, everyone, and welcome to RealComps' very first Town Hall meeting. We are very excited about this opportunity tonight to talk to you about electronic lock boxes. Again, I want to welcome all of you to our very first meeting. I'm Karen Cage. I'm the CEO here with RealComps. I've been in this land of MLS for many, many years, and things are changing very rapidly, and we're working hard for you to stay up with those changes. We hope that you find this format convenient. We hope that the information will be useful. With me tonight, we have Tammy Cummings, who is our Product and Training Manager. And also tonight with us is Fran Green. Fran's behind the scenes, making sure everything runs smoothly. And so we're going to go ahead and get started. I'm going to start by just telling you what this format tonight will look like, what we're going to share with you, and how we're going to do that. So first, I will read and answer the questions we received in advance. Excuse me. There were four questions that we received. As we're going through our presentation tonight, you will have an opportunity to ask more questions by using the little Q&amp;A icon that you see at the bottom of your screen. So you can type your questions in there, and at the end of our presentation, we will go back and answer those questions. We'll do our best to respond to all of them after the presentation. If we run out of time, we'll provide you with a written update following this presentation. Also, at the end of the meeting, you'll have an opportunity to answer some poll questions, such as, was this Town Hall meeting beneficial? Was this information useful? The best time of day for you for these meetings? And then an opportunity to provide us with some suggested topics for future meetings. So again, after I answer the questions that were submitted, Tammy is going to provide a presentation of some really exciting new functionality we have for you that we're currently testing and will make available as soon as it is working as intended. The new functionality is called Access by Appointment. It provides full integration between showing time, appointments, and central lock. And you'll be able to turn this function on for individual listings, so you can pick and choose which listings you want to use it for. It will provide much stricter security by allowing access to only the agent who makes the appointment, and only for the time that the appointment has been scheduled. And that will all make sense here shortly when Tammy runs through that for you. She's going to walk through it step by step to give you a better understanding of just how it works. So as I said, I'm going to read the questions that we received ahead of time, give you some answers there, and as you have questions that pop up, please make sure you type them in the Q&amp;A in that icon you see below. So the first question was, why can't the use of the electronic lock boxes be made mandatory due to the increased safety and protection of our clients plus the reduced liability to the salesperson? And the answer is, we would much rather make the use of the lock boxes so easy and so desirable that there's no need to make them mandatory. It's always difficult to tell brokers and agents how to run their business, and we feel strongly that this new functionality you'll see tonight is what many agents have been waiting for. So we're confident that the rollout of this enhancement will increase the usage, and maybe we'll not have to address making it mandatory. We're hoping that we won't. The second question was, when the central lock boxes were first initiated, realtors obtained a number of boxes per the amount of listings they had at the time of the initiation. We are to return these boxes at a later date or be billed for them. And the question was, are the lock boxes available each year based on the amount of listings each Realtor member has? In other words, will the Realtor be provided additional free boxes each year based on the number of listings they have? The answer, lock boxes are, the use of these lock boxes and having the availability of these boxes are included in your MLS fees. So you're allotted a box for each listing with an active status. And what that means is each listing that is active, coming soon, CCS, which is conditioned to show, good grief, that it's contingent but continue to show, ABO, which is Accepting Backup Offers, or Partial Save. You can also get a box for your pending listings. When you're done using a box, you can hang on to it for a future listing. But we do ask that if you happen to have a surplus of boxes you're not using, that you make arrangements to return those to either your broker, your board, or to RealComps. And the reason we ask this is that we don't want to have to purchase more until it's absolutely necessary. We purchased upfront 25,000 boxes, and we know there's not 25,000 boxes in use right now because there's not 25,000 listings out there. So we ask that if you do have a surplus, that you bring those back so that we can send them out to people who have new listings. If you don't have a box and you get a new listing, you can request one and get one. We have the forms that you'll fill out. We'll make those available to you. You can pick them up at your board, except for GMR at this point. At RealComps, which does require an appointment, we're here on Tuesdays and Fridays to make those available for you, or we can ship them to you. You would be responsible for the shipping costs. So we try to make it as easy as possible. Question number three. As technology continues to seep its way into our industry as real estate professionals, does RealComps take self-preservation of our industry professionals into account? Because the obvious question becomes, with more technology comes less need for personnel, which the average mind could see as a concern and worth raising awareness. Absolutely, it's worth that. We do take that into consideration. We're very concerned with the technology and communications keeping to make sure that we always keep the Realtor in the center of the transaction. I know you hear that a lot, but it is one of our core functions, and we do take that into consideration every time we look at any new product or service that we're considering rolling out. For this reason, we're also careful about the information that goes out to the public, and we require that brokers opt in for the distribution of their data. Our technologies and partnerships are never intended to reduce the need for a Realtor, but to make the Realtor's job, your job, easier, less frustrating, and more successful. And the fourth question was asking about being notified of an end of showing, that it's sporadic, and maybe they're not getting all of the end of showings through those electronic boxes. In Tammy's presentation, she's going to show you the best way to communicate that end of showing, and then she'll tell you about some other ways that that can be done. So I'm going to turn it over to Tammy now, and she's going to go through some slides for you and run you through that Access by Appointment. You're muted, Ms. Tammy.
Hello, I'm Tammy Cummings, and I am the Product and Training Manager at RealComps. And I've been with RealComps for going on 21 years, starting out in the Customer Care Department and working my way through a variety of positions between then and now. So today, we're going to talk about the Access by Appointment, and I'm going to share my screen so that I can show you... Fran, I need to be able to share my screen. Okay, so we've got lock boxes and the new Access by Appointment, or sometimes it will be referred to as ABA feature. Before we get into the ABA, one of the things that I wanted to point out to you is that in the Edit Listing screen, we've added an option right by where you manage your photos and upload documents. There's an option to assign or remove a lock box. If you click on that, it takes you to the screen that lists all of the lock boxes that you have in your possession. So you'll select Central Lock. You'll select the lock box that you're going to put on the property by serial number and click Done. This will go ahead and assign that lock box to that property. If you've already assigned the lock box to the property through the app or the Central Lock website, then you can still come back here and associate the serial number with that listing. When you do that, it will display on your listing in the Access section where it says that you're going to access by Central Lock, it will show a tip sheet link that will let all of the showing agents access the instructions for showing lock boxes. That's one of the questions that we get often, is that, well, I don't want to use it on my listing because other agents don't know how to show it. Well, here are the instructions that make it easy for them to get that information. Now let's go ahead and go into Access by Appointment. The point of Access by Appointment is that the showing agent can only access, can only open that lock box during their appointment time. So you come into the website. I'll show you the website instructions as well as the app instructions. This is the website. You go into Listings, and then click on the address. When you click on the address, the Edit Listing screen comes up, and there's a checkbox for Enable Access by Appointment. That's not there today. This line is blank. It will be there when ABA is turned on for everybody, once it passes our testing. You'll select that checkbox. You'll click Save Changes. This will turn it on for that property, for that listing. If you prefer to do it through the app, you'll turn on ABA by going to My Lock Boxes from the hamburger menu in the upper left-hand corner, and then select Property Access Settings. From there, you can search for a property, or your listings will come up, and you'll just click on the listing that you're working with. It will walk you through the lock box showing setup instructions. If you have any standard instructions or special instructions, if there's an alarm, and then click Next. It gives you the option to add homeowner notifications. These screens are already there. If you go in there, it's just the ABA screen that's going to be added. This is homeowner name and phone number, and homeowner two, name and phone number. And if you put that information in, they will get notifications when the showing begins and ends also. Then click Next. And the last screen, which is the new one that will be added, is Access by Appointment. When you first come in here and haven't turned it on, it will say, Access by Appointment is currently turned off. Access by Appointment prevents anyone from accessing this listing unless they have set up an appointment with you. So to turn it on, you click the Turn On button. If it was already on, you would get this screen that says, Access by Appointment is currently turned off, or on, I'm sorry, on, and it would give you the button to turn it off. But we're focusing here on the turning it on. When you're the showing agent and you've opened a lock box, it gives you the option to see the listing details during a showing. Showing Time is one of the options, and it will link to the showing time information. If you do select Showing Time as the option, and you can see it in the lower right corner of the mobile screen here, it has the Showing Time icon. If you do select Showing Time, it will require that you log into the Showing Time app if you haven't been logged in already, and it will require that you log into RCO3 to view the listing. The other option for listing details is Home Snap, and that requires no additional login. To select the app that will provide listing details, select My Settings from the hamburger menu in the upper left-hand corner, and then select the desired program that you want to get the listing details from. Like I said, you have the choice of Showing Time or Home Snap. And also make sure that the switch here says On. When an appointment is made through Showing Time and accepted, the users will get a link in the Showing Time app to Centre Key to open the lock box. So if you're using the Showing Time app to go from listing to listing, viewing your cart, getting all of the showing information, it will show you a link to open the Centre Key app to open the lock box so that you don't have to go back and find the Centre Key app and open that separately. Karen mentioned about end-of-showing notifications. What we really recommend that everyone do is, at the end of their showing, there's a clock icon in the upper right-hand corner. If you click that clock, it will send notifications to the homeowner if that has been selected, and to the listing agent, letting them know that the showing is complete. It will also give you a button to make it easy to open the link to return the key if you need to do that. And that's on the same screen as the Open Listing Details was that we talked about earlier. So in the upper right-hand corner, the little clock. The other ways that they can get notifications is if the showing agent has their location services turned on and go a half mile away from the property, it will send a notification that the showing has ended. It will also send a notification saying that the showing has ended if they open another lock box within two hours of opening the original lock box for the first showing. So they've gone to the first showing. They've completed that showing. They didn't click the End of Showing Notification button in the upper right-hand corner, and they go to a second showing, and they open another lock box. That will trigger that notification to the first showing to say they were done and give the End of Showing Notification to whoever is set up to receive that. And that is the end of the presentation.
We did receive some questions as we're going on. Somebody told me that the most used phrase in Zoom meetings is, "You're muted. You're muted." I think I've used it the most, too. So we have received some questions. The first question we received was, recently, I had a dozen showing setups in Showing Time. Once on the road, however, the Showing Time app did not work. We stopped at the closest McDonald's to have access to Wi-Fi. I was able to take screenshots of each of the properties with lock box information. I was able to show all the properties with no problem. Now, I don't know if this is during that period where Showing Time had some difficulties with their program being up and down. They did experience some problems, which was very unusual for them. We have not had that in the past. Tammy, can you add anything else to that where it might be an issue?
If they were in an area that doesn't have good data, they do want to make sure that they've opened the app before they leave home so that it can connect to the data and verify that they are a RealComps customer and an authorized user of the Central Lock product.
Okay, if that, when we answer your question, if that doesn't answer it fully for you, feel free to come back in and retype it. Give us another question, and we'll go from there. Okay, next. There was talk about combining Showing Time with Central Lock. When this happens, how can we make sure that the new app will not freeze right before we're ready to show? And I think Tammy answered that for you by saying about making sure you open the app before you head out in the morning. We're going to give you more information when the ABA is released because you're going to want to make sure that you open that app and wake it up within a half an hour of your appointment to make sure that all that data gets downloaded. But that's all going to come with the information for the ABA. Glenn, I hope that you're able to hear now. I saw that you couldn't hear the questions. I hope you're good now. I saw you had another question, so I'm going to assume that you're okay. I'm not able to access Centre Key because my iPhone 6 is not compatible with the system, per the Centre Key folks and a member of your Customer Care team. Will this be resolved? Do you know the answer to that one, Tammy?
I don't believe that it will because it does have certain standards that your device has to have in order to access. Your iPhone or an iPad, if you have an iPad that's newer, an iPad can use the program also. But it does have certain standards that it has to have in order to use the Centre Key product.
Certainly not the answer we want to give, but we'll make sure that the answers we give are the truth. Okay, next question. They're coming in quickly here. I had someone access lock boxes prior to me giving approval. I know this is a violation, but she thought since I said I received the buyer COVID disclosure, she could go in. Still an accident, but what if the seller is at home? Will this fix this? Yes, because now that box will not open, except during the time the appointment has been scheduled. There is going to be a little leeway at the front and the back of that appointment because the time on those boxes sometimes gets a little off, so they had to make provisions for that. But yes, this will take care of it. When you log into Showing Time and say, "I want to make an appointment for 123 Elm Street on Tuesday from 1:00 to 2:00," and you approve it, that box is going to open shortly before 1:00. It will be available until 2:00, and it will be only for the agent that made the appointment. So it cannot be somebody else coming to show the property. I think Fran is deleting the questions as we go. Okay, how is this different than the functionality of Showing Time when giving codes to access central boxes? Let me make sure I understand this. How is this different than the functionality of Showing Time? So I think you're asking, when somebody makes the appointment or when you use Showing Time as your appointment center, and Showing Time gives the code maybe through...
One-day code.
One-day codes. This won't change that. They'll still be able to give the one-day codes. So I don't think this is going to take that away. It's just that the new Access by Appointment is so much more secure. It will be better if you use this, but I don't know if Showing Time will be... They won't need to have to do that. They'll be able to go online, set it up through Showing Time, and have it set up to only open at that time. So it won't be different than the functionality, but you may not need that functionality as much anymore if they're all RealComps subscribers. So I hope I answered your question, Jim. Next question is, what is Access by Home Snap about? Do you want to give a little more information on that, Tammy?
Home Snap doesn't have access to Central Lock.
But they can use that to open, when they're in Central Lock and they're opening the box and they want to see the details of the property, they can click on the Home Snap link, and it will open up the listing so they can see all of the details on the listing for the property that they're showing. That's what that is for.
Yeah, that's to see the listing details, to see the bedroom dimensions, and all of the information that would be on the RCO3 listing.
Right. Okay. Glenn, if I want all appointments and access to be through Showing Time exclusively, will I be able to restrict it to this method? Glenn, you're going to have to set that up for every single listing because the Access by Appointment is attached to the property, not the box. So every time that box, every time you're using a box on the property, you'll have to turn on Access by Appointment. So you'll have to do that for each one. I don't think that there's going to be a blanket way to turn it on for all of your listings, but we can find out. I don't believe there is, though. I think you're going to have to do it individually. You will be able to do it. You'll have to, but again, you're going to have to do it individually. Mr. Elliott, will I still be able to continue to schedule showings on properties by using either Showing Time or the Home Snap app? Or do I need to see it through only one app? You don't use Home Snap to schedule the appointments. Dave, that's just to view the details of the property when you're showing, when you're at the property. It comes up as an option on the Centre Lock, pardon me, on Centre Key app. You can see, view the details of that listing. Maybe your buyer has some questions about how big is the lower level. You'll be able to pull the listing up by clicking, you can do that today, by clicking the Home Snap button on the Centre Key app. Make sure I got that right. But that's the way it is today. We've added Showing Time as an option to also be able to pull that data up. But as Tammy said, you have to make sure you log into Showing Time, and you'll have to log into RCO3. Did I cover that right, Ms. Tammy?
Yes.
Okay. When is this scheduled to go operational for all? I know everybody's excited. I will tell you that we have worked on this for two years. We knew that this was something that was going to be an important part of the Central Lock boxes from the very beginning. When we asked about how we could connect these two, first, we asked, how can we make sure the box only opens during the appointment time? We were told, nobody had ever asked for that before. I'm not sure I believe that because I really think that this is what the security is all about for these boxes. So I will also share with you that the testing we do on the ABA, the Access by Appointment, has to be done at a time when none of you are trying to schedule appointments. So we are testing it at 6:00 a.m., and then we, because we have to turn it on to test it, then we turn it back off at 8:00. So if any of you are early birds, and you're in there poking around and you see something weird, that's because we're probably in there testing. Our next test is scheduled for next Wednesday morning, and we had three outstanding issues after the last testing. This will be our fourth time testing. We're doing it next Wednesday. And if everything goes well, then we'll schedule the release date. I can't tell you what it is yet because we want to wait and see if that works. So as soon as we know it's working right, then we're going to make it available for all of you. It's very exciting for us. We know it's going to be heavily used. Okay, next question. Will this all be available as a recording to share in office meetings? Absolutely. We are recording this. Fran is recording this in title presentation, and you'll be able to use it for your meetings or for your own to go back and refresh your memory. Okay, off topic. That's okay. When is Miss Rick's listing going to be available to RealComps? Probably beginning to middle of the fourth quarter. The data has been mapped, and we're working on getting that all fed in. I have a call scheduled with that gentleman next week to kind of iron out some additional... I have a call scheduled with that gentleman next week to kind of iron out some, some additional details, but we're hoping to have that available for you fourth quarter of this year. We're excited about that, too. And yes, that data will be completely brought into RealCom. You will not have to have a separate login, one search, one return for the data, and so that we know that's the best way to do it. Hi, do we have new apps for Central Lock or the same, still the same? There are occasional updates that you'll have to do. I think they're going to put an update out there Tuesday, which is why we're doing our testing on Wednesday. Most times it's automatically updated when you turn, when you open up the app. It doesn't cause you to have to go out and do anything. Is that correct, Tammy?
Yes.
Okay. So if there is a new app, look at, Fran would like to answer that question. You go right ahead, Fran. Where is she? No, maybe not. Okay. Maybe she was just kidding. Okay, next question. With the ABA feature, will the showing agent be able to see that the ABA feature has been enabled? That is an excellent question. And that question I asked Ms. Tammy just right before we went live with this, with this meeting, and we're not sure. So we're going to have to find that out, if they will know that they can only go in to, that they'll be able to see that that property is only through ABA. We're going to find that out for you and we'll send that up, and we'll send that out to you.
It should assume every listing is ABA so that the lockbox is only going to open at that time.
I'm sorry, say that again, Tammy?
But if they assume that every, that every listing has ABA installed, then that's a good thought process to have.
It is. It absolutely is. Jeff, has Central Lock fixed their software issues generating one-day codes, et cetera? I think I'm going to have to ask you to get a little more specific for me, Jeff. Generating the one-day codes, we really, we really want you to try to get in the habit of, if they're a RealCom subscriber, they can download Centre Key, you won't need a one-day code. If they're not a RealCom subscriber, they can use Centre Connect. Centre Connect gives you more reporting features and so forth. I don't, I don't know exactly what their software issues were that you're referring to, so if later on here you can get a little more specific, I think that would help. Can you go over opening the app before leaving home again? I had a lockbox not function for me this past weekend. That has never happened to me before. We can, but I don't know if it's going to, I don't know if it's going to answer your question, but Tammy, do you want to touch on that, the importance of opening up your
You want to open the app while you have data that's dependable. So we say at home or any place that you know that you have really good service. If you're going into an area that doesn't have good data service. And so you want to open the app and just let it connect to the servers so that it authorizes you and knows that you are a RealCom customer in good standing and have access to open those lockboxes.
And then again, we'll have more details of the importance of opening that app, again, within a certain amount of time prior to your appointment to make sure that that information is downloaded and because it, Showing Time is sending it to Central Lock like in half hour, a half an hour before the appointment in case it gets canceled or something gets changed. They want to make sure it's as close to the appointment time as possible. And all of that information will be included when we send out the details of how the ABA will work. We'll have that particular detail in there. They haven't quite figured that piece out yet, so that's part of what we're testing. Okay, Tammy said, "Open the app before heading out. What if you are going from one appointment to the next while you're out? Will this still work?" Yes. Yep, you've already downloaded your, for the day. You're good. You should be good. And Glenn said, "No, I didn't." So I'm going to assume, Glenn, you didn't hear the questions at the beginning. We could go back over them or you could listen to them because this is recorded. I know that you did have another question in here, so I'm hoping that you're hearing us okay now. I don't know how else to respond to that. I'm sorry. Jerry wants to know what percentage of our membership is currently using the electronic lockboxes? Yes, we would like to know that, too. Unfortunately, we're dealing with some information that's not quite as reliable as we would like in terms of how many boxes are in use and how many agents are using them. I will tell you that it certainly isn't the percentage we want to see, and hopefully by the time we get this rolled out, we'll have some of those reporting methods fixed and be able to give you really good details of how many people are using them. We really feel that this piece is critical to having more people use them because this gives that security it was supposed to have from, from the very beginning. Oh, Glenn said he wrote the second question. Hang on, Glenn. Oh, you mean the second question here. Oh, that was the question about can you have blanket access to use ABA for all your listings? You will have to set that up for each listing individually. Every time you want ABA for a particular listing, you will have to establish that on that listing. Okay. Time to upgrade. Okay. Carl wants to know, whoops, not a Central Lock question, but I was wondering if RealCom has any plans to partner with some of the Northern MLS, Michigan MLSs like Water Wonderland, so we can see the Northern Michigan listings? We are open to data share with every MLS in Michigan that is willing to share with us. So we reach out often and will continue to do that. We don't have anything in the works right now other than Mishrick, but once we get that data in there, we'll continue to reach out to, to the others and see if we can't get that data incorporated into our system. That is our goal. Our goal is to have all the data for the state of Michigan. It always has been, so we'll continue down that, down that path. What happens when I get to my scheduled showing 10 minutes earlier, 10 minutes late? Is there a buffer time before and after? Yes, Heidi, there is. Right now it looks like it's going to be 15 minutes, 15 minutes before, 15 minutes after, I believe. Is that correct, Tammy?
Yes.
The buffer? So you'll be able to get in 15, that's part of what we're testing to make sure you can still get in the 15 minutes before and the 15 minutes after. And so that will be part of the information we send out, but I do believe it's 15 minutes. Mr. Whitehouse, is there a time limit on ABA before or after exact showing time? Again, if the, if the showing's for an hour, you'll be able to get in 15 minutes before, 15 minutes after. If you, if you use that little clock icon when you're done with your showing, you click on that to say, "I'm done showing," it also allows you there to open the box to put the key back if you haven't. So that'll give you that opportunity, too. But the time limit on ABA is the time limit of the appointment and then the 15 minutes leeway that you get before and after. I hope that answers you. Kim, you are now talking about an iPhone 6. That is the type of iPhone that I have. And that is the iPhone that is not, that you cannot use with, with the Central Lock. Is that correct, Tammy?
That's what, that's what she said before, yeah.
One of the things I should bring up here, because I don't think that we have mentioned it, with the implementation of ABA, there are two, two pieces of the Central Lock box that will no longer work. One is the access cards, the little cards that people get. Those will have to be turned off in order for ABA to work. Now, that's mainly in the Ann Arbor area because they also use Central Lock and they have the cards, too. We have notified them of this change and they're in the process of getting everybody over to the app. And the other is the call before showing because you really won't need that. Instead of call before showing, you'll set up an appointment now and there would be no need for them to call before showing to get that access because they won't be able to get in until such time that the appointment has been made. Are the Central Lock going to remain free and if not, for how long? Right now they are. If, there's been no discussion about, I don't like to call them free. I call them included in your fees. Nothing is free. You pay for them through other methods, you know, through your MLS fees. And there's no talk right now of charging for them. We've talked a little bit about a deposit so that we can get them back when, when you're not using them, but that's just talk right now. And we certainly wouldn't do that without coming to all of you first. So long answer to the question, no, or I mean, yes, they will remain free. Okay, Pamela, I don't, I don't have the Showing Time app, but I have Showing Time scheduled and my confirmation links to the Showing Time website that has a link to Central Locks. Are there any problems doing it this way?
Nope, that's fine.
Nope, that's fine? Okay. Tammy says no. You can tell that Tammy is the product expert.
You don't have to use the Showing Time app. You could be using the Showing Time link on the, on RCO3, however you make appointments with it, it's fine.
Okay. Is there, Anne Marie, is there a way to send a code to the showing agent to punch in rather than needing my phone to access the box? I have awakened my phone ahead of time and still had it not working at the showing.
One-day codes won't be going away?
Yeah, okay. One-day codes will not be going away. It bothers me that you're still having a problem when you get there, though, because if it's possible, and I know that this is asking a lot, if that happens to you and you're standing at that property and you're standing in front of the box and it won't open, it would be great if you could call us, call support, not Central Lock, but call us and let us troubleshoot a little bit. I know sometimes that's really difficult because you might have your buyer with you and it, and I, I get that. And so I, if you can't do it, I fully understand. But if you can, it helps us to troubleshoot those issues and maybe we can figure out, you know, why it's happening and help, help you make sure it doesn't happen again, if, if that's possible. I know it's asking a lot. Jane, when you need to take a lockbox off a home, is it better to open the box and then release the shackle or it doesn't matter? I don't think it matters, does it? I don't think it matters. Doesn't matter. Either way. Mr. Mustawi, what's the best way to deal with late or early showing? I'm going to guess you mean late or early showing in terms of people arriving early? Again, if you have an appointment, the box won't open until 15 minutes before. And if it's after the showing and they need to open the box to put the key back and it's past 15 minutes, it's 15 minutes past the time that the showing was to have ended, they can use the showing, the clock icon to say that showing is done and that will allow them to open the box and put the key back. I'm guessing that's your question. I'm hoping that's your question. How much leeway? Because if we're showing seven houses, sometimes we are late or early by 10 minutes or so. Again, we're looking at 15 minutes upfront, 15 minutes on the, on the backend. We knew that was going to be a very, a very, very important question. So it's 15 minutes. And again, another question, what's the leeway time? If your appointment's for 1:00, you can get in 12:45. If it ends at 2:00, there's a 15 minutes on the backend, too. Terry, thank you for answering my iPhone question honestly. It's very frustrating and time-consuming to call each agent to request a one-day code. Many brokers are not providing one-day codes. How will you handle this? I cannot tell brokers that they have to offer one-day codes. That is an individual brokerage decision they have to make. And I, I feel your frustration, but I cannot tell them that they have to offer the one-day codes. They have to make the property available for showings and they're doing that through the app, through the Centre Key app. So I, I, I'm not going to be able to give you an answer that you want because me handling, it's not mine to handle. So I do apologize for that, but I can't, I cannot make them do that. I did make sure the Showing Time app was working before leaving home, so perhaps I should phrase the question differently. Okay. Should the Showing Time app work even without Wi-Fi being available in the area? If so, how?
I think she means the Centre Key app, not the Showing Time app.
Okay.
So opening the lockboxes does not require that Wi-Fi is available in that area as long as you have communicated before you left home or before you left an area with data to authorize you to open the lockbox. It does not need to have Wi-Fi in the area. It connects by Bluetooth, so it just needs to make sure that your Bluetooth is on, on your phone and not that it has Wi-Fi.
Okay. Showing Time already gives a code when showing, when a showing is scheduled. How is this different? I'm sorry, I'm not understanding how this is any different than that. I think when you're talking about the code that you're given, that's a one-day code that can be used, that Showing Time gives out to somebody calling to schedule an appointment. This is different because you can limit the showing to the person who is calling and making the appointment, or that is logging on, making the appointment, and it is restricted for only the time that that appointment has been made. I believe a one-day code is available anytime throughout that day. Is that correct, Tammy?
Correct.
So if somebody is getting a one-day code, they would be able to use that code at any point throughout the day. But if they're using the ABA, the access by appointment, they could only use it during the time the appointment's been scheduled and just for that person. I believe that's the biggest difference, far more secure than the one-day codes.
And also, none of the notifications are activated with a one-day code, so using the app is a better way, too, so that you get those end-of-showing notifications.
Will the showing agent know that the ABA feature is being used? We believe so, but we're going to check that to make sure. As Tammy said, I think what we should do is just assume all of them are set up that way. What were you going to say, Ms. Tammy?
I've been told since we started that people will not know that ABA is turned on.
Okay. She's already typing those questions into the powers that be. They will not know that that's been turned on. They'll have to, so we're going to tell everybody, assume it is turned on for all of them and treat it as such. That's the way it should be treated. Dave wants to know, will RealCom, non-RealCom agents, inspectors and appraisers still be able to access by one-day codes? Yes, it's so much better if they use Centre Connect, though. If they download Centre Connect, they only have to download it once, then you can give them access through that. And again, you will have the, you will have the, the reporting that comes with it, the end-of-showing stuff, that kind of thing. It's just so much better through Centre Connect and you can limit the time or expand the time. Say you have a contractor that wants to go in for a week. I believe you can do Centre Connect, you can set it up for a week. Is that correct, Tammy?
I believe so.
So it's much better if you can convince them to download the Centre Connect app as non-RealCom subscribers. And Glenn, you're welcome. Dave, I've been using HomeSnap to schedule showings lately.
HomeSnap shows the Showing Time icon.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dave. So you can schedule, you're still using Showing Time, you're just doing it from the HomeSnap app. Gotcha. That won't change. None of that will change. You can do it through, you can do it through RealCom, you can, that won't change. Sorry, Dave, I didn't understand your question. Rhonda wants to know, once ABA is set up, if you are showing 10 different houses, it sounds like we will need to allow for more wiggle room in case of traffic or delays. I can see agents now making the appointment times an hour when they only need 15 minutes, which means less showings available per day. Well, as the listing agent, you control how long those appointments are scheduled for. That's going to be up to you to, to, you know, there's going to be a little learning in here, I'm sure, but you have, you have that control. If it's your listing, then you can say, you can schedule it for 15 minutes or you can schedule it for an hour or whatever the case may be. So again, we'll have to, I know that there's going to be some learning there, but I'm sure that we'll, we'll all get the hang of it quickly because this is such a valuable piece to what it is you do. Tricia wants, Tricia wants to know, if you find that your phone dysfunctions, is there a manual way to get into the system? I'm going to, okay, let me assume that you're standing at the box and your phone isn't working and you can't open the lockbox. Is there a way for you to get in? There is, but you have to go through a lot of security questions, I believe, in order for that to happen. Is that correct, Ms. Tammy?
Well, the first thing that I would recommend, if the lockbox doesn't open using your phone, is that you reboot your phone. We find that a lot of times that people have trouble opening a lockbox, it's because they haven't rebooted their phone in days, weeks, months. So the first thing I would try is rebooting your phone. Second, if it still doesn't open, then one-day codes will still be an option.
Also, if you're standing there and it won't open, call us and let us troubleshoot with you again, please. I know that's asking a lot, but it, it really does help. And our customer care staff is so knowledgeable about these things and they can walk you through a lot of different things. of different things to try before you, before you just give up. So call us and let us help you with that. I'm assuming the session's being recorded. That is accurate. And will be available for refresh viewings. Also accurate. This will be available for you. Does the box need to be closed before the next agent shows a home in a multiple showing situation? Well, I'm going to let Tammy answer the technical part and I'm going to answer the business part that says, yes, you would want it closed so that you know one showing ended before the next one started so you can tell who's accessing the key through that box. That is important for you to know. If I come and I, and I, then I close the box and then Tammy opens it, you're going to know that I was there, I took the key out, put the key back, and then Tammy took it out. But technically, I guess you wouldn't have to do it. Is that correct, Ms. Tammy?
Your answer's perfect. I would always recommend that you don't hand off the key. If somebody else comes for a showing after yours, I would not hand them the key. Put it back in the lockbox and have them open it because then they're taking responsibility for being in the house and you weren't the last one to enter.
Okay. I've noticed recently, this is from Lynn, I've noticed recently that appointment times in some listings have a one-half hour time period. I think it's a half hour. This could cause an access issue if we are showing several properties and they are ABA. Could the ABA automatically be an hour time period to avoid missing the time slot? No. The ABA time is scheduled according to the appointment that's made. The ABA just, all it does is say only open during the appointment times. It cannot determine how long those appointment times are. So that will have to be done by the, between the showing agent and the listing agent. Is there a default on those now, Tammy, in showing time? Is the default time for appointments half an hour?
I believe it's an hour.
An hour. I know they can be changed. So, but no, the ABA won't be able to handle that for you, unfortunately. Janice wants to know if the presentation will be available to us to review? Absolutely. Sherry wants to know, what is MISHRIC? And also, are Centralox lockboxes safe for use at this time? I've heard stories about sellers having surprise showings and want to be sure my clients are safe. Okay. MISHRIC is the, it stands for the Michigan Regional Information Center or something like that. It is the west side of the state, is what it boils down to. It's the MLSs joined together on the west side of the state. It includes Grand Rapids, Kalamazoo, the whole west bank over there. And all of their listings will now be incorporated into real comp's MLS, so you'll have access to more data. Centralox lockbox is safe for use. This ABA is going to make them so much safer. The horror stories of somebody walking up to a house and opening the box without having an appointment is exactly what this is meant to address. Because the boxes right now open for anybody who has the app and that's what we've been fighting about for two years, to say that is not acceptable, we need that to be fixed. And that's exactly what this is going to fix for you, that it will only open during those times and it will only open for the person who made the, who made the appointment. Anne Marie wants to know, when the days-on-market issue with, am I real source going to be resolved? I will have to get you an answer to that, Anne Marie. I know it's been an ongoing issue. It is a very touchy issue, but let me get an answer for you and we will report that back to all of you. Pamela says it's her first time using the Centralox. Can you do a quick review of what I do when I arrive at the house I'm showing? Can you just run through the steps real quickly there, Tammy?
Sure. It's not something that I can show to you, so I'm just going to have to tell you verbally. We do have a tip sheet on our Lockbox Central page that might be helpful for you to print out. So when you arrive at a house to, that has a Centralox lockbox to have a showing, you're going to walk up to the lockbox, you're going to press the enter key to wake up the lockbox. You'll have your showing time app open and it will communicate with your phone. You'll put in your PIN number that you set up when you originally registered for Centralox. If you haven't done that, then contact customer care and they will send you the link. Or if you forgot what your login information is, contact customer care and they'll help you with that. And then, once you put in that PIN number, or some phones allow you to use your fingerprint instead, the lockbox will go ahead and open and you'll be able to get the key out of the compartment.
Go and watch the video, though, because it does, it walks you through every step.
Absolutely.
It's very, very useful. Next question, when will Zoom meeting air again? This will be available to you through a link that you can watch whenever you want. So it'll air again whenever you want it to. That's a great, that's a great answer. Centralox is great. I've had zero issues. Yes.
Yay.
Thank you. Thank you, Jane. Appreciate that. Okay. Karen wants to know, will we be switching to our new state-issue ID numbers? Okay. So let's talk a little bit about that. You know that your login ID is that ID number after the 650-whatever that you've had for quite some time. And then the state assigns new numbers. Now, on your member record in RCO3, that new number is there. It is showing there. We do keep it there so that people, because people have said, hey, you've got my old number, my new number's not showing, and when I called to make appointments, they're not seeing that. It is there. The reason we don't change it as your login is because when the state assigned new numbers, they started reusing the last six digits and just changed the 650-whatever. So we were running into problems with those numbers being duplicated. And that's why we couldn't automatically switch to them. So your number will stay the same, but you'll see the new number, and if you go on your member record in RCO3, you'll see that today. It has what your license number is. So we tried to do it that way to make sure that information is available to verify who you are. And then, but then, we can't change your other one because, like I said, they were duplicated. I hope that answers your question. Joe says, sometimes it's a lot slower before opening than other times. What causes that? I don't know. I don't know what causes it. I'm assuming you mean the opening of the box. I don't know. We can ask what that might be. We can ask what might cause that and we'll get back to you.
Again, a suggestion that I would have is rebooting your phone because if your phone is working slowly, it may not be communicating with the box quite as quickly. So again, anytime you have a problem with opening a box, my very first step would be to reboot my phone.
But we'll find out if there's some other reasons why that might happen. Scott, when showing multiple homes in a day, it's very easy to miss the target showing window for the homes last on the list. How easy is it to modify your requested showing time on the fly, on the road? Tammy, how do they go about changing those scheduled appointments?
In the app, there is the option with your showing confirmation to reschedule the time. And if you have missed your showing window, you do want to reschedule because that homeowner needs to know that they, that that time is changing. So they need to know to be gone from their home during that time, too. So anytime that you're not going to make the showing window, you should be rescheduling the appointment to put in the time that you are actually going to. And that will need to be approved again by the homeowner or the listing agent, depending on who's approving showings.
And if it's through ABA, if it's through Centre Key as well. And so that'll still stay coordinated there. Carolyn, Carolyn, sorry, I may have missed this, but I'm on the showing time app now and trying to do the update. I don't, okay, but it shows that there's an additional charge for this. Is there an additional charge now? Oh, Tammy already knows this.
That, that update in the, in the menu is not the update you want to use. That's to update your showing time to additional features, additional functions that they offer, additional features that they offer. There is no charge. And I think that update is a little misleading. That's not where you're going to go for that. There is no update to the app right now. It will automatically update or it will prompt you to update your app when it's time.
Ooh, good answer. Glenn says he's offset, yay. Okay, this is a repeat question. Apparently we didn't answer it right the first time. And I think it's because we assumed she was talking Centre Key and she's saying that she's not. The showing time app was working before leaving home. Should the showing time app work even without Wi-Fi being available in the area?
If, if you're, if it is the showing time app, then without Wi-Fi, it's not going to get any updates and it's not, you're not going to be able to make appointments and such. It, you need to have Wi-Fi or data available in order to make appointments and use the showing time app.
But the opening of the lockbox, the Centre Key app itself doesn't need data at the time you open the box. It needs the Bluetooth, correct?
Correct.
Hope we got it right this time. Okay, Thomas, if you are waiting to show a home and another agent is staying overtime, how does that work? Well, that again comes down to, you know, there's no, there's no technology that's going to fix that. If you have an appointment scheduled at 1:30 and somebody is still there, I, you know, I, you're going to have to ask them to, you're either going to have to wait or ask them to please end their showing because you have an appointment. Or contact the listing agent and ask that yours be rescheduled for half an hour later or 15 minutes later. However, there's not, there's no technology for that answer, I don't believe. Is that correct, Tammy?
Right. However you would handle it today, if you got there, if you got to a house and somebody was already in there, however you would handle it today.
I hope that answers you. Mr. Elia, will ABA work with non-real comp agents who use Centre Connect? I believe with Centre Connect right now, you could already set the time that you want the box to open for each person.
Yes.
So it kind of already is there with Centre Connect. So it's not really ABA that's working. It's just the same way that it works today. You set the time when you're giving access through Centre Connect. Is that correct, Tammy?
Yes.
Okay. No, okay, maybe I misunderstood you. Did you say we could not issue one-day codes? I did not say that. You can issue one-day codes. We recommend that you try the other methods and not issue the one-day codes. Either use percent ask that if they're a real comp subscriber, they use Centre Key, or that they, if they're not a real comp subscriber, that they use Centre Connect, only because you have more security through that than you do the one-day codes. But the one-day codes are not going away. You can still use them. Tricia, can you put trackers on boxes to see whose boxes are sitting in offices and not on homes and listings? I would have to do that before I sent them out. But I will tell you that we are, we're working on some plans to try to get them back. That's a great idea, but, you know, I'm hoping that it won't come to that. But I do like your suggestion. Thank you for that. Thank you for that. Colleen, are there plans coming to help auto-generate codes to provide Centre Connect users? Having to manually do this takes time. That's interesting because we are in some discussions with showing time and Centralox right now, asking, is it possible that can be the next step? But I caution myself from saying that because it took two years to get the ABA up and running. So I don't know how long it'll take, the Centre Connect piece, but we're going to continue to push that for you because we do understand that, that that's important for you. So we will, we will certainly keep moving in that direction for you. Another off-topic, any plans or discussions with Northern Great Lakes MLS about data sharing or other MLSs across the state? Again, our doors are open to every single MLS. We had a password exchange with Northern Great Lakes. It didn't last too long because of, it was a financial issue for them. Every time one of our agents logged into their system, they had to pay their vendor a fee for that person. And so we said, okay, great, we'll exchange the data. And, you know, some MLSs are a little, a little, I like the word stingy, but I'm not sure it's politically correct. They don't really like to share. But we keep, we keep asking. It took years for us to get MISHRIC to give us their data. And so the fact that we're there now gives me hope for the others as well. And we will continue to, we'll continue to ask and make it, make it available to everyone. Tanya says she has a Centralox box stolen from a property. It was sawed off. I did make a police report. How do I get a replacement? You want to call us, Tanya, we'll walk you through those steps. There's some information that you could, that you could provide for us and we'll make that available for you. So just call support and let them know and we'll go from there. Sharon said that Jerry's question was a good one. I don't know which one it was. He had a couple, but good job, Jerry. What can we do to encourage the Northern MLSs to data share? What committee would be the right one to join to work toward that? Hey, we're open to it. We don't need a committee. We're saying, come on in, we'd love the data. And so I will certainly reach out to you and let you know, you know, we'll let everybody know at some point if we're looking at putting a group together. But, but we're open. So it's really on the other side. So if you got, if you have any influence in these areas, you've got friends in the Traverse City area, certainly give them a call and ask them when they're going to come on over and, and tell them we're waiting. We're ready. Dave, how will ABA function when there are overlapping time due to buffer? Again, you're going to want that first person to put the key back and end that showing before the next one does. And as Tammy said, that's really no different than today, other than it won't open for the next person unless they're in that, the time range of their appointment. So if, if the agent is allowing overlapping showings, now again, the showing, pardon me, the listing agent determines that. They don't have to allow for overlapping showings. They can turn that off. So if they do allow for it, then they'll have to make sure that they remember that when they're scheduling back-to-back appointments and make sure that that first agent puts that key back before the second one opens it. That is really, really important. When will Zoom meeting air again? Again, we will make the link available and you can go and look at that whenever you would like. Will facial recognition still work with Centralox? Does it? Yes. Yeah.
That's another option, like your fingerprint. So if it works today, it will work with ABA also.
Yes. We're going to skip Dave's comment. I know he doesn't want me to, but I'm going to. Oh, on his phone. On his, he said on his phone. Yeah, you will. Okay. Can we get additional Centralox boxes at no charge? You can have as many lockboxes as you need for your active listings, which is active, partial save, coming soon.
ABO.
ABO, which stands for Good Grief, It's Getting Late.
Accepting backup offers.
Accepting backup offers and CCS. Yes. When you call us or when you fill out the form, we will look at your inventory to see how many listings you have and how many boxes you have. If you have 10 listings and five boxes, then you, you are able to get five more boxes. So there's a form you can fill out, Jim, online, send it to us. And if there's any differences there that says, nope, you're not able to get those boxes, we'll let you know that, too. But yes, you can get them at no charge. What operating system on our phones does one need in order to utilize the app properly? I see Tammy looking.
I really don't know off the top of my head, but customer care can provide you with the minimum requirements that are needed.
Are those online? I think those are probably online, under our Lockbox Central?
Yes, they are also online.
Under Lockbox Central, it's all listed there as well. So, but we'll, we'll refresh that information for you, too. Heidi wants to know, is it preferable to leave the lockbox open during showings or is there a reason to close it after I take the key out, to open the door and then open it again to replace the key after showing? What do we recommend there, Tammy?
I would recommend closing it. There are times There are times that when it's left open, that it can lock up and not allow you to close it and have it locked properly. So I would take the key out and close it, open the door if you're going to hang on to the key while you're doing the showing, and then open it again to return the key.
Okay, Anne Marie says, I'm going to read your second one first, because then it makes sense to me better, that she's having problems with the boxes in spite of being awakened ahead of time, mainly during near waterfront or on waterfront properties. I don't know that we've had information come to us that says there's issues mainly in those areas, Anne Marie. So I don't know that I can respond to that. I don't know of anything there that would typically not allow the box to be opened. Do you?
Just if there was poor data coverage in the area.
Right.
But that shouldn't be an issue with opening the lockbox. If it was viewing, if that was the question about viewing showing time, then you would have to have data. But opening the lockbox shouldn't matter whether you have data or Wi-Fi, because that's a Bluetooth connection, so.
Again, if you're standing on the beach and the box won't open, oh, if you could call us, it would be so helpful and help let us troubleshoot with you. I can't stress enough how important that is, and I also can't stress enough how I understand it's not always possible. But if it is, then we can help you with that. Ms. Zimmerley, sometimes agents are there longer than their appointed time, which encroaches on my time. What's the remedy for that? Well, you can just boot them out, or you can ask them to, I'm going to, this is, I'm going to give you my serious answer. You probably have to contact the listing agent and ask for your time of your appointment to be changed, or that they notify that agent that that appointment has to end. There's no technology that's going to help with that. It's a matter of that agent needs to put the key back, close the box, and let you go on in. There's no difference in that today, other than if it's past 15 minutes, if it's 15 minutes past your allotted time, you know, that would have to be an hour and 15 minutes past your allotted time in order for you not to be able to get in. I believe that's accurate. Is it not, Ms. Tammy? So they'd have to be an hour and 15 minutes into your time in order for you not to be able to get in. But if it looks like that's what's going to happen, you'd have to contact the listing agent and reschedule that appointment, or ask that current agent to wrap it up and let you come on in. That's not a great answer, but it's the best I got for you. Scott, what if you miss your leeway time, then you don't get in? But again, it would have to be like an hour and 15, if your appointment's for an hour, you'd have to be late by more than an hour and 15 minutes in order not to get in. And that's part of what we've been testing, so that you wouldn't be able to get in. What are the biggest differences with ABA versus the use of Central Lock right now? Pamela, that would be the ability for you to set a very distinct time for that appointment and have that box only open at that time and only for that agent, instead of anybody being able to approach the property and open it at any time if they have the app. It's critical. It's absolutely critical to offer that security for your sellers. Sometimes a listing is so popular and showings arrive early or late, I have been concerned about just handing the keys over to the next agent. Best and safe practice would be to still put the key back and end the showing, correct? Absolutely, absolutely. And the listing agent will appreciate that, because they'll get that notification that that showing has ended and that another one has begun. So you're doing them a favor, too. So you're absolutely right there. Mr. Whitehouse, would working with a team, can one team use the app to make an appointment and another team member show the property? The app automatically selects the person making the appointment. I'm going to just hand that whole question over to Tammy.
The person making the appointment needs to be the one showing the property.
Even if they're part of a team?
Even if they're part of a team.
Okay. There you go, Doug. I hope that's the answer you wanted, too. To clarify, what are the main differences of ABA versus Central Lock and Showing Time in use today? Biggest difference is now you set the appointment in Showing Time. Well, with ABA, you'll set the appointment in Showing Time. It'll send that information automatically over to Central Lock if ABA is turned on, and it'll say, don't open the box except during this time. Before, there was no communication, not that kind of communication between Central Lock and Showing Time. Now those will be coordinated, and that's the biggest difference. Thank you for asking your question again, because I hope that I clarified it better this time. Is there anything you want to add there? Okay. I did mean the Showing Time app rather than the Centra Key, because Showing Time and Centra Key are to be combined. The way to make it work anywhere is via Bluetooth, am I understanding it correctly? Well, they're not really going to be combined. They're just going to talk to each other. So.
My box opens via Bluetooth.
Yes, it does open via Bluetooth, yes. You are correct. Thank you, Karen and Tammy, for making sure that when we use the Central Lock box, our client's safety is maintained. You are welcome. You are welcome. And thank you, Dave. It is good to hear we finally got this done. You were around with us while we were fighting this battle for a long time. Can we still allow overlapping showings with ABA? Yes, that's up to you. As the listing agent, you can still offer that. I'm not familiar with Centra Connect. Where can I go to get more information on this app? You can get that from our corporate site, is it just realcomp.com, the corporate site? And there is a section there called Lockbox Central. And you can get all the information you need, including for Centra Connect, at Lockbox Central on realcomp.com. Customer care phone number, you know, I don't call them. It's 888. Oh, it's 877. Look at, I was even wrong with the prefix. 877.
553-3430.
What is the number to call for customer service at RealComps if I'm standing? Here we go again, 877-553.
3430.
3430. And thank you for asking that, Anne Marie, because it will really help. Where will presentation be available? I'm not sure where Fran is planning to make that available.
I believe it'll be emailed to all the participants.
Okay. We believe it will be emailed to all the participants. If we find out that's not true, we'll figure out how to get that to you.
I would guess she'll also include it in a tech trends or on the announcements, so that people that weren't able to attend tonight will be able to see it also.
Correct. Shelley, right after I open the box to get the key, do I leave it open until my showing when I replace the key? We would suggest that you close the box and that you reopen the box to replace the key. That's the suggestion that we make. Okay, I would open the box at the beginning of my showing and would close it after my showing was complete. Should I have been closing the box before beginning my showing? Again, there's no rule on that. It's just a suggestion that we make, that you take the key out and close the box and then open the box to put the key back in. But there's not a rule that says that's what you have to do. So it's kind of hard for me to say, these are the steps. You'll just have to use your best judgment there. Hello, Mr. Leach, there have been several times that I've been out showing houses and Showing Time app quits working. You have to close the app and reopen it.
The Showing Time app won't, if the app crashes, that won't keep you from opening a lockbox. It's the Centra Key app that you need to open the lockbox.
Cynthia, I just opened my lockbox at home and allowed opening, and the screen reads success. Retrieve the key now. I closed the box, but my phone still reads the success message. How long will this stay on my phone? I don't know.
I don't know either.
I don't know. Cynthia, we'll have to get it. I don't know what you can expect there.
Once you have opened the lockbox, it should go to the next screen that would allow you to view the listing. But if it's not attached to a property, then it doesn't know what to go to, so.
She'd have to close it herself? She may have to force close it?
Yeah, she would have to force close the app, because you didn't really open it to get a key off property.
Tamara, I'm with James. Never had an issue. Yes. I wish ELB was on every listing, though now it's getting dark. The ELBs are a lifesaver. Excellent. Thank you for that, Tamara. Appreciate that. Mr. Leach, is there Central Lock training for office admins? Again, most of that training is available through webinars online, recorded webinars. If you have a specific need for your admins or something, Jeff, you know, you can call us and our trainers will, if they can't provide you with that through one of the already recorded webinars, we'll certainly see what we can do to get that training for you. I'm being called out by name on this one. So Karen, what does your MLS crystal ball say? Will the real estate market be heading up or down by the end of the year? This is really funny, because I've been doing this, I don't even know if I want to say this, for 41 years. And it's kind of like being a weatherman. You kind of just get up and look outside and go, it's going to rain today. I think, Mr. Elia, that if we don't start getting more inventory in, there's going to be a struggle to stay up, because there's not going to be much to sell. So I think a lot of it's going to depend on what's going to happen with the inventory. Thanks for putting me on the spot there, Dave. Okay, Madonna, how do you reboot your phone? You turn it off and back on? You just turn your phone completely off and then back on? That's it, right?
Yep.
Okay. Dawn.
But not just turning the screen off. It has to actually shut down.
Correct. Now hold that button for just a few seconds longer until it actually shuts down, yes. Oh, is there a plan to automatically provide Centra Connect? And now I see three questions down that Dawn says my question has been answered. Yes, we're working on that for you, Dawn, to make that better. Okay, so Centra Key works with Bluetooth, but Showing Time does not. I think I'm getting closer to fully understanding how the two apps/gadgets work. The Bluetooth and Centra Key is what's used to open the lockbox. Showing Time needs data, as Tammy said, so it would need data access, Wi-Fi, internet access, data access. Centra Key does need data at the beginning of the day, when you first open it, to download all the updates you may have. But to open the actual box, it needs Bluetooth. Where can I find more information on Centra Connect? Again, go into realcomp.com and search for Lockbox Central. That's going to answer another question we have coming up, Lockbox Central and RCO3. It's in realcomp.com. Is there a link from RCO3 on the homepage, Tammy?
On the dashboard, it's the icon right next to RCO3. So when you log in and you get that dashboard, before you go into RCO3, the second icon is the corporate website, realcomp.com. That's the one you want to go into.
Okay, Glenn, fantastic presentation, Q and A. RealComps keeps getting better and better. Thank you, Glenn. Yay. We were very excited about this opportunity today, because we feel like we're losing touch with you guys, and we don't want that to happen. So, okay, Linda, I have iPhone 6 Plus, and it has always worked with Central Lock. Is this something new that it's no longer working?
Nothing is changing as far as the requirements, as far as I know. So if it's working today, then it should continue to work.
Excellent. Shelley says, thank you. You're welcome, Shelley. And Mr. Jonathan says, great session. Thank you, RealComps team. You're welcome, Jonathan. Pamela, some agents are only allowing 15-minute showing times. I think you'd have to deal with that at the time that you schedule the appointment, Pam, and, you know, push for more times. I know that if they have it down to only half-hour increments, when you go into schedule, you would have to, you'd probably have to contact the office and ask if that can be expanded. Is that correct? I mean, can they do that through the app? Can they ask for more time?
It doesn't give the option to ask for more time. It would be up to the listing agent and the homeowner how long they want showings to be.
Okay. So if you're not getting what you need, Pam, I would suggest that you try to contact the listing agent and see what you can do to extend that time. I don't know that I have anything else that I could offer there. Okay, Jeff, go into Showing Time and Reschedule. Okay. Go into Showing Time and Reschedule.
I think that's if they're running late.
Right, got it. Sherry, off-topic, what is Lockbox Central where the agents access? And again, you can go to, when you first log into RealComps, before you click the icon that takes you to RCO3, the one right next to it is the one that takes you to RealComps' corporate website. If you click on that one, Lockbox Central is available there. It's through realcomp.com, and that's where you'll be able to access that. Sharon, thank you for this. Everybody stay safe, and you as well, Sharon. Thank you for joining us tonight. Thank you so much for the Zoom meeting. Very informative, awesome. Thank you for that feedback. We appreciate that. Why do so many RealComps realtors still insist on asking for one-day codes? I really can't answer that question. You know, it's, I don't know. I don't know if they're, we've heard things like, I'm afraid I get out to the house, it won't work. I won't be able to open the box. So I think that there's a little fear there, Jeff, and, you know, maybe once I get used to it, that'll go away. I don't know. That's really the biggest thing I've heard. I'm scared I'll get there and it won't open, and I'll be standing there with my buyer. Don't feel like a dummy. So they want that one-day code for security purposes. That's the only thing I've heard. Anne Marie, love this format. In spite of you having to answer things more than once, I'll answer them as many times you need us to. That's what we're here for. You do realize that you guys are amazing. I think that you are unsung heroes. Thank you. Well, thank you, Jeff. I appreciate that very much. Robert, is there any tracking done when a lockbox is opened or closed? That was a little bit of what we covered, Robert, at the time of the, when the showing is over. When it's opened, there's a notification that goes out as well. Is that correct, Ms. Tammy?
Yes, and there's also an access log in the app and on the website for each lockbox, and it will tell you who opened the lockbox and the time that they opened it. So there is extensive tracking available when they use the apps, and that is one of the reasons that we recommend that instead of the one-day codes, because the one-day codes do not have the same kind of tracking that the Centra Key app and the Centra Connect app have available to the listing agent.
This has been very informative. Thank you, Karen and Tammy. You're very welcome.
You.
Thank you for this presentation. I had to take a few months off and really needed the update. Well, I'm glad we could accommodate that for you. Thanks, Karen, Tammy, and Fran. You guys are great, as always, and as you miss Pamela.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Great presentation, very helpful. Thank you. Do you need to answer the app question when you open the box, is the key missing? Oh, that question. Also, just closing the box at the start of your appointment won't log you as finished the appointment. That's correct.
You do not need to answer the key missing question unless it is missing.
Yes, you don't have to answer it unless the key is missing. That one kind of, yeah, we've had that question before. It makes it look like you do, but you don't. And the last one, thank you for the information. You're very welcome. Oh, wait. I will be taking a few months off. We'll not afford to accept the lockbox if I'm not going to be using them. Yes, they will. Yes, they will, and thank you for that, Cynthia. We appreciate that. Okay, we've answered all the questions, 125 of them. That's awesome. Thank you. We appreciate you as well. So we will make this available, and Fran will get links sent out to all of you. Here's a little follow-up poll question, a couple of questions for you. Was the town hall webinar beneficial? Which part of the day is best for you to attend a RealComps Town Hall meeting? We really want to make sure that we host these at whatever time of the days work best for all of you. And then there's going to be a survey that comes to you that says, what what kind of topics would you like to have addressed? And we're going to be putting things together to be able to address whatever it is you need. So thank you all very, very much. On behalf of myself and Tammy and Fran, we thank you for your continued loyalty as a RealComp subscriber. And make sure you always let us know how we're doing because that's the only way we get better. So thank you all very much. Have a great night.